Good evening, welcome to the Monday, April 18th Rutland City Board of Alderman Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a move, motion in a second, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any community members that would like to speak from outside the rail tonight? Alright, hearing none, communications from the mayor.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just have two quick things I wanted to mention, and this is more for the folks at home. Wanted to report on a couple of events that have happened over the last few days, actually one four days ago, and the other one today. First, as many of you know and were present the other night, on Thursday Cedar and the Chamber of Commerce held their first in-person mixer in two years. It was a great event. No real news came out of it, except what I think is very important for all of us and for the city is that the Regional Recreation Center hosted the event, Kim and her staff, and it was an opportunity to highlight the building, and highlight the building to really a new audience, people who hadn't generally, hadn't seen the facility, and certainly seen it in all its grandeur, because it worked out to be perfect. There was lots of room, everybody had room to move around, and it just went off very well. And it took a lot of hard work to get there, and we appreciate that, but I really do believe, you know, a lot of people got to see it, maybe plant some seeds, you know, about possible events, you know, that other folks could have, bring more people into the community, therefore it's more revenue for the city of Rutland and more help for the taxpayers. So I think that was all good, and I was very pleased with the way that evening went. So today, the, this afternoon at 2:00, the Paramount Theater actually hosted a press event over at the theater, featuring Senator Leahy, thank you Senator Leahy, celebrating the, a $500,000 grant from the federal government that Pat Leahy secured for the renovations over at the Paramount, not just at the theater itself, but at the Richardson Building next door. I think, I think, I know, this group, the city of Rutland, the Board of Alderman, we have been right out in front, supporting that project, as the state of Vermont has, and now our federal partners have too. And I can't say enough for Senator Leahy for taking the time to come down here, and really giving a great speech about the times he remembers in Rutland and all the other, you know, benefits that he's been able to provide for us over the years, and we want to thank him, and we appreciate all of that. So it was well attended by the press, appreciate everybody that came, and I think it was a good news for the city of Rutland. Certainly when that project is finished, which I believe it'll be in about 24 months, that's again, gonna bring, I think their attendance is looking to increase by a third, that's more bodies, more folks into downtown Rutland, that's more people going to the restaurants, that's more people taking, accessing our retail, and just spending time here in the city. And so I think that's good for the bottom line also. So for the folks at home, I wanted to make sure you were aware of all of that, and that's all I have for tonight.
Great, any questions for the mayor? Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Alright, moving on, additions and deletions to the agenda, do we have any? Seeing none. Reports and letters from department heads and officials, Brennan Duffy, RRA Director, recommendation to release Zimias funds. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, good morning, or good evening, everybody, sorry. So as you may recall, or some of the new folks may have read in the memo, back in October, the Vermont Farmers Food Center came to the city, and came into committee and had a planning initiative that they wanted to undertake, and were seeking support financially from the city to hire a consulting team, to look at what they could do on their campus, and also some of the adjacent lands, including the dress factory there at 10 Cleveland Ave. And there were a couple stipulations put on the approval of that funding going out, which have now been met, so the RRA reviewed this at our last board meeting, and found that they have created a document that gives them some level of site control, that they had reworked the scope of work a little bit with M&amp;S Development and Coolus Consulting, and that they have completed the Phase 2 environmental assessment that was currently underway back in October. So the RRA's recommendation to the board tonight is to release those funds and approve the project, and we have Chris, Greg, and Elizabeth here, who I'm sure can answer any questions, or might want to just give a little update on where things are, if you'd like.
Thank you Brennan. My name is Elizabeth Coolus, for those of you who are new and haven't met me before, unlike Phil. I used to serve as the Executive Director of the Housing Trust of Rutland County, so I'm known in the region for my real estate development for nonprofit purposes, and since I retired from that role back in 2020, I started my own consulting company called Coolus Consulting, and I have the pleasure of working with the folks at the Farmers Food Center, among other nonprofits in the region, to work on facility projects. And Chris Keizer and Greg Cox and I spend a lot of time together these days, working on their vision for a full-on campus expansion at the Farmers Food Center, which will include the full buildout of all of the buildings that are currently on that site. Greg contacted me in early 2021 and asked me if I would be interested in working on the project, knowing that I had the experience I had, and also had spent a lot of time and interest on the Lyndale Lee Building, and that's when the conversation of my working with them began. They at that time discussed with M&amp;S Development, what I would refer to as the preeminent private development company in the state of Vermont, the idea of doing the full campus expansion at the Vermont Farmers Food Center, and they were immediately asked, can you make it bigger? So we've talked, and we have some ideas, which could include the redevelopment of the Lyndale Lee Dress Factory at 10 Cleveland Avenue, but the first and foremost priority for Farmers Food Center is to get the Farmers Food Center, quite frankly, the Farmers Hall back open ASAP, and get the full campus fully renovated. So I, coming into the picture, have worked with M&amp;S Development to tease out what role would be helpful for them to have played at the local level, and then what they're gonna bring to the table for expertise, and what we're really doing is a financial feasibility analysis. We really want to understand, not just if, but how, the full campus renovation project can be financed, and what is the highest and best use for the property at 10 Cleveland Avenue, and if it is commercial and/or industrial, and there is a really viable, important use that relates to the Farmers Food Center, then there would potentially be involvement there, but otherwise, there will be other partners brought to the table to help redevelop that. So as part of the work that I've been doing with Greg and Chris, and Brennan, and others who are in the community development field in the city, is we've been talking and working on what, what will this look like, and who will fulfill what roles, and Brennan and I have worked closely, and we've been talking a lot about TIF, and the various ways in which the city of Rutland is gonna be really important in its participation in this project. Likewise, I've been talking with Lyle and Tyler at Cedar, I've been working closely with Ed Bove at the Regional Planning Commission, and will do so with his successor when his successor arrives, and we've also had Mary Cohen from the Housing Trust at the table as well. Part of the work that's been done is, is building these bridges and starting these conversations, and, and so in following through on the, the expectations of this board to release Zimias money, we have secured a letter of intent with the current owner at 10 Cleveland Avenue. It is not in your list of requirements, but we have also negotiated for an appraisal so that that conversation can occur, and we can, after this, take this to the next level of negotiation, and really be able, be in a position to negotiate for true site control. The, we've had the Phase 2 environmental assessment completed for both properties, for the Farmers Food Center, as well as for the Lyndale Lee property, and as you all know, we've identified serious concerns at the Farmers Food Center, which we are now working closely with our team to address, and get, as I said, Farmers Hall open as soon as possible, and then build the rest of the mitigation and/or remediation into the full campus renovation project. The concerns at 10 Cleveland Avenue, beyond the asbestos that we all know about, are actually fairly minimal, and would also be incorporated into any redevelopment plans there. So that's pretty much the update, I'm gonna be doing the local piece, working closely with Farmers Food Center and the other partners in the region, and will be trying to nail down some of the expense areas in the budget that are more locally determined for M&amp;S, and they'll be pulling together financial feasibility. So I really want to say thank you to this board for the action that it took six months ago. We had a really healthy discussion, I asked the Board of Alderman to step up and demonstrate to the city how important this project was, is, for this city, and to do something that it doesn't always do, which is to put first money in, and to do so with conditions, because we didn't quite have things articulated the way they needed to be. And so I'm very grateful to you all for, for giving us that opportunity, for taking that chance, and we're really excited to be here tonight, telling you we've accomplished those things, and we're excited to move forward. Happy to take any questions, and if you have any specifically for Greg or Chris, you're welcome to ask those as well.
Questions? Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and now we need a motion.
Move to authorize to spend the $34,000.
Thirty-two five.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-four is great, but it's thirty-two.
We'll make sure of the number.
Thirty-two, make sure the record shows that.
Thirty-two five.
Thirty-two five.
Thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So you have a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
On that subject, so people understand, a lot of people got a little nervous with the Public Works Department down there, setting up all this fencing and everything up, that is for a safety area, in case the wall does give way, that is to protect us, our liability in the street, and the fire hydrant has been moved, so all that's been happening, so no, we are not doing anything there, we're just trying to protect taxpayers walking down in there.
Thank you Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, again, Mr. Duffy. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you Chris.
Thank you so much.
Alright, back up again, so more good news. As the mayor mentioned, I believe at the last Board of Alderman meeting, the city was successful in our application for a Vtrans grant to work around the, the train station there in the plaza, and we're ready to begin working on a grant agreement with the state for that, and as part of that, they have a, a little document that we need to have the mayor sign, so Barbara put together a little memo that explains that in more detail, but we're basically just looking for authorization from the board for the mayor to be able to sign that, and us to begin the grant agreement process, and then I guess the mayor would be our, our project lead there, and be able to sign documents in the future.
Great, I have a couple questions, first Alderman Neary, and then.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'll abstain from this vote, as I did in the application phase of the project, since I worked so closely with Brennan and wrote the application, so I'll make that known.
I was gonna make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Suspend the rules, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic.
And I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the PCF, and any and all documents necessary to execute this project on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, any discussion, questions, comments? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Chief Lovett, the local emergency management plan, which is also in your pocket, and has been emailed actually.
I'm here tonight.
Yes, I'm here tonight to ask for your permission to have the mayor sign the local emergency
management plan, it's a yearly document, it's revised every year, tried to update, and to try to keep up with the criteria and the new format, so it looks a little different than last year, but I'd like your permission to have the mayor sign it.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, alright.
Thank you.
Not quite there yet.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the emergency manager, local emergency management plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to sign the emergency management plan, it's been seconded, any discussion or questions for the chief? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you chief.
Thank you.
Awesome. Moving on, Superintendent Peters' request for authorization to sell the city, some city-owned property, Kim?
Oh, alright Tyler. So we're here to ask permission to sell three pieces of equipment, and either sell or dispose of some old bricks that are at the gazebo at the Goddard Adult Center, two mowers, one's a two, a year 2000, the other's a 2001, they're both ground masters, 62-inch and a 72-inch, and we have a 2008 Savannah van, one-ton van, that we're looking to sell, just old stock going out, because we had new stock come in the last couple of years, so just looking for permission to sell this equipment, and either dispose or sell the material, the bricks.
Alderman Davis? Sorry.
I just have a question. So I'm assuming whatever revenue you receive for the sale will go where?
Thank you Mary, Mary actually asked me to say this, that any revenue would go back into our equipment, our replacement fund.
Thank you.
For the recreation department.
Move to suspend the rules, to take the matter up tonight.
Seconded, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded, that's, I didn't care who seconded.
Sorry, it was Phil motion, and I think Matt seconded.
Matt did, thank you.
Sorry. Alright, any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Motion to approve or authorize to sell the equipment that's on the list.
With the money, if I may.
With the money going into the.
Equipment replacement.
Replacement fund.
Okay, we have a motion to sell the equipment on the list, the replacement money going, the money going into the equipment replacement fund, can I get a second?
Second.
The motion's been seconded, any discussion? Any questions for Tyler? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Treasurer Markowski, treasurer report first, we'll start with that, if that's alright with you?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, everyone, this is the third quarter, believe it or not, 22 report, I think if you took a chance to look at it, I think you'll see that revenues, particularly non-tax revenues are much higher than budgeted, so that's a good sign going into the end of the fiscal year. Expenses are about 68%, where we're looking at 75%, so positive right now when you're looking, but a lot of things can happen in the last quarter. One thing that I wanted to highlight is, as I've been coming to the board, I keep reminding folks of the state programs that are available, financial assistance to taxpayers, so I just wanted to point out just how much, from January to March, we collected $96,000 through the V, yeah, $96,000 from Vhfa, a portion for water and sewer and taxes, I mean that's really, those programs are really helping our delinquency situation in both the water and sewer fund and the property taxes. We have the information on the website, we have it in our office, and we really encourage taxpayers, if you are in need, really reach out, the programs are, I mean, it's a huge help to our community, so it's just interesting to see that it is being utilized, and I wanted to report that out to folks, so. I'm not gonna get into detail on the financials, because I'd like to refer that to committee, and I know tomorrow, just as a reminder, we will be reviewing the FY '21 audit report, so my ask tonight is to review the, to refer this, the third quarter report to Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, that has been referred, thank you Mary.
Thank you.
Alright, and then moving on, the ARPA update and the election standard allowances.
Okay, so ARPA is always changing, in January, the final rule rolled out, so that changes things for this city. First of all, what I, what I did was, I went back through all of the board minutes, and I looked for specific things that this board, as the full board, approved financially for. So there are a lot of things, discussion items that are still in committee that maybe aren't on my list, but they're still being considered, but I wanted to, just for the public, I was able to identify commitments of approximately $1.3 million. We also have an RFP outstanding for the Main Street Park, so we'll, I don't know where that's gonna come in, I had a rough number of 400 from committee discussion, there was a lot of discussion about the Paramount, and that, I didn't see it finalized at the board level, that commitment, but, and then 400,000 seed money for, for a grant fund, which is up for consideration tonight. So in total, I had identified 2.4 million that was committed, approved for RFP, and in consideration, so, of projects, I thought that was interesting and wanted to report that out. And also, there was, Alderman Davis had pointed out, the IT had also, is in IT committee right now, to review, we don't really know the cost of that.
Right.
And whether that'll come from.
There was a lot of discussion in regards, because it incumbents also some upgrades with police department, this building, it was unsure as to what the cost would be, whether efficiency Vermont could be a funding source, all of that was still fact funded.
Right, so there, there are a number of things that are still in committee that haven't really come all the way through for approval, but I just wanted to supply that just for information, so we can keep tracking it, so. And then, for tonight, the, the original ARPA rules had laid out four or five areas that you could spend, you were restricted where you could spend your ARPA dollars. One of those was applied toward revenue loss, the final rule allows the city to claim the entire 4.4, 4.5 million dollar award as a, under the revenue loss category, so that, the city will be using those funds towards general government services. So what happens is, we will replace expenditures in our general fund with ARPA dollars, so now we're gonna have a large unrestricted fund balance in general fund. I think that's the way that it's going to work, I've followed a lot, and still looking for a little bit of guidance on the accounting and how that'll work. So the most important thing tonight is really for the board to formally make that election of that standard allowance, so that we can move forward, and then I will continue to work with auditors in how to properly account, I think we had a discussion the other night about possibly renaming, so we're not calling it ARPA anymore, I'm not, I'm not there yet, but I'll let you know when I feel like it's the most appropriate time to, to do that, when we have it accounted for, so. So my request tonight is, I laid out a motion for the board on that standard allowance.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, okay.
And I'll move, a motion for the Board of Alderman of the city of Rutland to formally make the one-time irrevocable decision to elect the standard allowance approach for the city ARPA awards in the amount of $4,506,011.8 to spend on the provisions of government services throughout the period of performance of the grant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Hey, thank you.
Alright, we are done with reports and letters from department heads and officials, we are moving on to reports from standing committees, Alderman Wickham.
Mr. President, if I could, just before you get in there, before Kim leaves and her commander, I want, I want to publicly state, what I saw at the rec center the other night at the chamber mixer, was right on, and made the city look good, you made us look good, you did a wonderful job, and I think you publicly need to be told that.
And I, I think to Mary's point, like finding that other revenue source, I mean that's, that is a revenue source that we're, we're looking at, and our only hope is that some of that money can be used to make improvements for capital improving, that's what I thought about, so.
It was a good night for Rutland City.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so the Finance Committee met on April 12th, 2022, the topics warned were $75,000 for matching funds for VT, Vtrans grant, and $400,000 for grant seed money. Members present were Alderman Davis, Attori, Savage, Talbot, and Wickham, others present were Marilaire, President Dunges, Alderman Neary, and Treasurer Markowski. The meeting was called at order at 5:30 PM. Alderman Wickham opened the meeting by explaining that while $75,000 for a Vtrans grant match was warned as part of the agenda, it would not be a topic of discussion, as it was a topic addressed previously in the Community and Economic Development Committee, never formally referred to the Finance Committee. Marilaire discussed the rationale for establishing a grant matching fund in the request for $400,000 in seed money. Marilaire outlined possible uses for the fund, as well as noting that the Zimias fund had been fully exhausted, leaving the city well and established funding source for matching grants in the future. Marilaire discussed his plan to implement a line item in the budget to maintain the fund on an ongoing basis. Alderman Davis made a motion to authorize $400,000 of ARPA funds to be used to create seed money for a grant matching fund. The motion passed, 5-0, and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, so I have to make a quick interjection, there was a technical issue with the warning of the meeting, because originally it was supposed to be on Wednesday, and we moved it to Tuesday, for that case, and out of an abundance of caution due to the possibility of a technical non-compliance with the notice requirement for the Finance Committee meeting, I am suggesting that at least six members of the board, vote, the board, vote to void the motion coming out of committee, and three-fourths of the board members present and voting tonight would still like, if they'd still like to act upon the matter tonight, without having another committee meeting, a motion would be in order to discharge the Finance Committee of the subjects, for the Vtrans grant, the Amtrak station project, oh sorry, that's not up for motion, I apologize, for the $400,000 in seed money for matching grants. If the vote is successful, those particular matters could be voted upon tonight without any need to suspend the rules, as the three-fourths vote to discharge the committee has the effect of teeing those matters up for the possibility of a vote for the meeting tonight. So, to simplify, we need to, this is, that was, sorry, so that was from the city attorney, I'll say this in my words, to simplify, we need to, we need to vote to void the motion, after we vote to void, we need to vote to discharge the committee of the topic, after we vote to discharge the committee of the topic, we can vote to take up the $400,000 seed money matching. Sound good?
Point of void, you mean pull the motion back.
I will read, I will read the, what the city attorney wrote specifically. The city attorney said, that at least six members of the board void the motion coming out of committee.
So, could I just have some clarification?
Yes.
So, yes, the meeting was warned for that Wednesday.
Yes.
And then Alderman Wickham had something come up where he had to move it to Tuesday.
Yes.
We received a notice, but it wasn't properly noticed?
We received a notice, the city clerk posted a warning, but because of the website and possibly some other areas, it wasn't properly warned according to city rules, but it's a technicality, but we just want to avoid the potential of the technical.
That's fine, I just, I'm thinking, I saw the notice, I got the notice, and I know it was downstairs, I just wasn't sure what happened to cause it to be an issue.
Yeah, because there's some ambiguity, this is just to solve the ambiguity problem.
So I'll make a motion to avoid the, no, I don't make a motion to avoid the motion.
So I, I believe what you're gonna do is you're gonna vote on the motion that was presented by Alderman Wickham, you're gonna vote down that motion, then you're going to do what we did before when we pulled Alderman Depoy's Raider thing out of committee, someone's gonna move the motion to, to yank that out of committee, I don't remember the exact word.
Relieve, relieve the committee?
Relieve the committee, 75% of you need to make sure that that happens, and then you can go ahead and vote on that again.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
No.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
There we go. Okay, so the motion fails. Now I need a motion, uh, let me read it specifically.
To relieve the committee.
Yeah, I need a motion to relieve the committee of the $400,000 seed money matching grant.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, great. All right, and now we need a motion to approve, uh, to authorize the $400,000 of the ARPA funds to be used to create a seed money for grant matching fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been, uh, it's, motion has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seed money is appropriated. Thank you. Appreciate the technicality, I'm glad we held that the right way. All right, moving on. Alderman Neary Charter and Ordinance Committee.
All right, um, the Charter and Ordinance Committee met on April 7th, 2022. Members present, present were Chair Neary, Vice Chair Gillum, Alderwoman Tadio, Alderman Attori. Uh, other members, or others present, sorry, not members, um, Alderman Dunges, Alderman Whitcomb, Alderwoman Davis, and others present, Attorney Blumer, Zoning Administrator Stranenste, Building Inspector Mark Siderski, uh, and Chief Kill Cullen, and also Michael Talbot. Chair Neary, Chair Neary called the meeting to order at 5:31 PM. The first item on the agenda was the draft shopping cart ordinance, as it was referred back to committee from the full board. The meeting began with a committee review of, uh, frequently asked questions memo prepared by Attorney Blumer. The memo included details on compliance, fines, roles, and responsibilities to directly address concerns voiced at the previous full board meeting. See that attached FAQ memo and updated ordinance. The committee discussed the collaborative intent of the ordinance to work with businesses regarding identification, notification, planning, and retrieval. The committee did discuss the elements of the effective retrieval program required by the ordinance, including cart information, signage, and retrieval plan. A plan template and guidance document will be created by the city to ensure compliance and consistency and make the process less onerous for businesses. The committee also discussed the process by which businesses will be notified of an abandoned cart. Several options to implement the ordinance exist, such as building and zoning code enforcement officer, downtown beat patrol officer, and city residents. Building and zoning expressed concerns about potential burden on the city, on the department, as the city will need to maintain a spreadsheet of notifications to businesses. The required signage on carts will include a number for people to call and notify the store of an abandoned cart. A potential reporting system could be added to a new city website. Many of the abandoned carts are found in repeat locations, and the retrieval could be focused on those areas. The city will share the map of abandoned carts that were collected by DPW to aid in business collection. Overall, the committee wanted to avoid any burden on city departments and would hold an additional implementation meeting and evaluate the effectiveness of the ordinance six months following adoption. The committee also discussed the lack of enforcement in the current ordinance. The court, current ordinance is not enforced due to the burden it places on Public Works, Police, and City Attorney. Fines against businesses or customers from the current ordinance have never been levied, creating a lack of accountability by businesses. The fine schedule was also reviewed and set by the committee. The effective cart nuisance abatement program noncompliance fees are $300 for first offense, $400 for second, and $500 for third and subsequent offenses, with a $150, $200, $200, and $300 waiver fee. The cart nuisance fines are $100 for first events, $200 for second, and $300 for third and subsequent, with $50, $100, and $150 waiver fees. The program fees were higher to encourage compliance by businesses, and fees for nuisance are only incurred after the city has retrieved carts more than three times after a three-day notification period within a calendar year. A motion by Alderman Attori to recommend to the full board the approval of the updated shopping cart ordinance in substantially the form presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion, questions?
I have to say, I've noticed the carts at Price Shopper, I don't know if you have, they'll have new red, uh, I'll call them brakes, I don't know what on. And then there is a, a nice plaque that says something, you know, if the cart is found, please call this number, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, and it also says, if you don't go through the checkout, the cart will not move.
That's correct.
Has to, you go through it.
Oh, that's pretty smart.
Yeah, yeah. So it was interesting, um, that they've really, there's a fair amount of new carts there, so they've really initiated that change.
Excellent. They're ahead of curve.
I talked to the store manager, and he gave me a tour, and basically, the cart is engaged when you go through the checkout. If you walk out with that cart, the alarms go off, they know you're walking out with something. And when I was standing there talking, the alarm went off four times. So they've got their act together down there, so nothing's getting out of the store. The only problem they have is the old carts coming in. They now have a way to deal with that, because if the cart does not engage as they go through the checkout, they'll pull that cart out and put it into the back inventory and put the boot on it as they saw it.
Alderman Attori?
I just want to say, I believe that the manager of Price Shopper is a Rutland City resident, so it's nice to see a, a local resident taking care of the community, you know, doing his part. Be nice if other businesses followed the lead.
Amen.
Thank you.
And they are picking them up.
Great. Mr. Mayor?
So I'm just going to reiterate what I did initially. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. Uh, I, I truly hope that it corrects the behavior. Um, I, I still am not supportive of levying fines on businesses that have their own property stolen. Um, it just goes against everything that, that I believe in, but I'm, um, willing to see this through and see if indeed it does work. They are addressing, like, we just said, Chris Katori, you're right, he is a Rutland City resident, I talk to him on a regular basis. Uh, he told me months ago that they were going to be getting this new equipment, they do have somebody out there picking it up. I think Walmart, indeed, it looks from where I live, over our church, that they are actively out picking up carts on a more regular basis than they were, so maybe all of this will be for naught, rather than maybe just a little push, but, um, the matter, the, the end result is, we want our city to be attractive, to be clean, and to be free of carts. And if this gets us there, then I'm all for it.
Alderman Attori?
Thanks. Um, you know, so, when this first came to committee, I was not sitting in, inside the rail, I was outside, and I also had the same concerns that the mayor had about the impact of, on business. I think one of the things that I learned in that committee meeting is that this is really about giving the businesses an opportunity to create a plan, and how are, how are they going to try to, uh, confront it or, or deal with it from their side first? The penalty seems to be so far down the road that, in general, as long as they're good actors, they shouldn't get a penalty ever. And so I think that that's an important piece to frame this as, is that, yeah, I have the same concerns as the mayor, and we don't want to be putting ta, uh, fees on our businesses. This is really about asking for a plan, and then making sure that they're good actors on that plan. And so I, I, I really don't see us using that stick, um, at, at this time.
Okay.
But I had the same concerns, so, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Alderman Neary. Alderman Talbot, Community and Economic Development.
Uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee met on April 6th, 2022. Members present included Michael Talbot, Sharon Davis, and Devin Neary. Others present, Mike Dunges, Kerry Savage, Bill Gillum, Anna Tadio, Dave LaRere, Kim Peters, Tyler Dolan, Shelley Lutz, Mary Beth Pauli, Andrew Shin, and Gordon DeShrillow. Others, Thomas Franco via the phone. The meeting was called to order at 5:35 PM. The first item on the agenda was the Velemon Trail and Associated VT Huts Project. Shelley Lutz explained that the Velemon Trail will be a bike trail running the state of Vermont from the Canadian border to the Massachusetts border, approximately 485 miles in length. She emphasized that the trail will link communities across the state. The trail is being organized primarily by the Vermont Mountain Biking Association chapters, with each working on small segments. In Rutland, they're working to bring the trail down from Mendon through Rutland City to West Rutland and Poltenie. They're hoping the trail will cut through Northwood Park and connect to Pine Hill Park. They brought this item to the Board of Aldermen because they need the city's support. Their favored route, which prevents the trail from crossing Route 4 more than once, involves crossing the watershed by the city reservoir. Shelley and Mary Beth met with DPW representatives who were not in favor of having the trail cut through the watershed. Committee members recognized the economic benefits offered by the trail and discussed possible routes around the watershed, and voiced hope that there was an opportunity to support the trail's preferred route while sufficiently protecting the watershed. The Velemon Trail representatives hoped to be able to make a presentation to DPW representatives and hear their concerns, specifically to learn how much of a buffer is needed to protect the reservoir. The item will remain in committee, and a future meeting will be scheduled, including DPW and the Velemon Trail representatives, to discuss the best path to bring the trail down from Mendon into Rutland City. The second item on the agenda was the raise grant application, which was approved at the Board of Aldermen meeting on April 4th. The CED Committee was tasked with compiling a list of transit-oriented development projects in need of additional planning. Alderman Neary listed a number of potential projects, including an updated hotel market analysis, a streetscape plan for downtown around multimobility, a master plan update, pedestrian safety around rail crossings and connectivity to downtown, transit connections to mobility hubs like Amtrak. Additional potential projects were suggested, including manufacturing a warehouse development adjacent to rail, food and freight related to VFSC, and a bike ped plan. The meeting adjourned at 6:14 PM.
Wonderful. Any questions for Alderman Talbot?
Information.
Thank you. All right, reports from select committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. Alderman Whitcomb, ARPA funds request $30,000 for Forest Street burned out homes.
Uh, thank you, President Dunges. So, the burned out house on Forest Street near MSJ has been an ongoing issue for quite some time. Um, in, in the recent weeks, Representative Howard of Ward III reached out to inquire as to, is it possible to potentially use $30,000 from the ARPA funding to tear down that structure, uh, while we wait to deem what's necessary with the property? Now, I don't know that this is actually yet in an ARPA fund request, given the state that it's in. I was hoping Attorney Blumer would be here tonight. I'm wondering if a referral to the city attorney to ask if this is even feasible, given where it is, would be in order.
I'll, I'll second for debate.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Go ahead.
So, um, I don't have a problem with referring to the, to the city attorney for some, um, some input, but, um, I have a concern of using ARPA funds for this when a bank owns the property. Okay? So the bank owns the property and has been an unwilling partner in accepting their responsibilities to take this building down, or secure it, or do anything else. I don't disagree that Representative Howard is probably getting heat from her constituents, but I do not think it's fair to take what is taxpayers' money to take down a house that is owned by a bank. So, uh, whatever comes back from this, if that's the request, I will be voting no.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to add on that property, just so everyone's aware, we, uh, tax sealed that property in December, I believe, so it's right in the redemption period now, so I don't know, um, that's another consideration. You're the attorney when he's...
So it could be in city-owned properties program, potentially?
Most likely next year in December, so just, so that you're aware.
Okay.
And if I could just follow up on that, um, most of, uh, my motivation for this referral to the attorney is just to give some clarification. I, I know it does really strike a nerve with the people down there, uh, living near it, and to be able to speak to them to say, we, we understand, you know, this is an eyesore, we understand your word, it's a safety concern, but, you know, given where we are in the process, it may actually be more sensible at this point, just to let that play out. And again, as Alderman Davis noted, this is a request for $30,000 that could be spent on literally anything else, when a bank owns this property and is doing nothing to work with us.
You know, if I could just, uh, add a couple things, uh, Mary Howard's been, you know, knocking on my door in previous years, and we have brought it actually to the Board of Finance, uh, for a discussion about that. My concern was more the safety aspect than anything else, because there were kids down there, and they had to be chased out of there, um, before. Um, I guess the only thing I will add is, that $30,000 number is probably three, four years old now, and it was, um, one of the local contractors gave us that number, and I guess it's going to be quite a bit more now, like everything else, it's, the price has gone up. But, um, Alderman Davis is correct, it is bank-owned. Um, the city attorney has made multiple, um, attempts to, you know, have a discussion with them there from out on the west coast someplace. Uh, doubt they have a whole lot of, you know, care too much about what goes on with that piece of property, but, um, there is a couple of other burnouts, but that one in particular is, is, is one of concern. It's a, it's a, kind of a main thoroughfare, uh, it's going to fall down here at some point, and it is a safety concern. So, you know, if we can do something about it, then I'm all for it.
Alderman Gillum?
I just want to be sure, is our building inspector in the Department of Zoning have done everything they can to secure the building, or make sure the property owners secure us the building, so nobody can get in there?
We've done everything that we can on our end.
So we've gone as far as we can go.
Yeah, we can. Anything else?
Great. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Awesome. We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Board of Control Commissioners, we've got none, unfinished business? Alderman Davis?
So, in the discussions that we've had, um, with the ARPA money, um, even though I, maybe I jumped this, but I, I feel very clear that we kind of had some motion in regards to the Paramount. It's unclear whether we affirmed, um, the request, so, um, I am going to move to, uh, affirm the ARPA requests from the Paramount Theater in the amount of $300,000 for their upgrade to the Richardson Building.
Second. Okay, can we get a motion to suspend the rules first?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So moved.
Okay, motion, motion's been seconded. We have a motion, it's also, so all those in favor for suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, and we have a motion that's been seconded, and you raised your hand for discussion.
Oh, no, I was, okay, after we get this.
Is there, are there any questions, discussion on the topic of affirming the $300,000 motion?
Yeah, I do have a question now.
Alderman Gillum?
Is that going to be two payments, or is that still, is that over two years, or is that all one payment?
I, I believe, if I may, in the discussion that we had, there, uh, we asked every entity that came in whether they needed the money, uh, front hole, you know, this section, or whether they could split, because the mayor had requested that we split the spending 2.2 and 2.2. Um, I believe they said they would, could do the 150, 150, but I'm sure that Eric or the treasurer could reach out and have that discussion as needed.
Okay. So the motion is to affirm the $300,000 for the Paramount to be distributed, however the treasurer decides.
Treasurer decides, yeah.
Okay, fantastic. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, any other unfinished business? Great. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business?
Yeah, this came through the traffic committee meeting on Friday, so I didn't get it in as an agenda item. But, uh, the committee, the Traffic Safety Committee voted unanimously to refer to DPW, um, the need for a traffic study and a bike ped grant application for rapid flashing beacons at West Street mid-block crossing in front of the Transit Center.
Okay, so, motion to refer?[1748.54]